Our mission statement was integral to all of our suggestions, recommendations. And so I want to read that to you. The primary focus of the short-term rental committee is to research and propose potential policy that manages growth while securing the long-term livability and well-being of our community. We recognize and have prioritized the necessity to balance the financial impact of STRs with maintaining our community's livability and neighborly village atmosphere. So given that, we came up with some ideas, and there are three different elements to our presentation, and then several options within some of the elements. The growth control policy aims to manage STRs citywide. The density proximity policy methodology is intended to address individual neighborhoods and streets. And then the occupancy policy addresses the next-door impact. By that, we mean parking noise generated by STR occupants that affects homes directly next door or near a licensed STR. High occupancy STRs can make these impacts especially challenging to manage. Of note, the previously outlined growth control policies are structured around objective considerations, while the density proximity policy and the occupancy policy are more value-driven and directly respond to public opinion as evidenced by the 2023 livability survey. In that survey, seventy-seven percent of full-time respondents said yes to the question, would you be in favor of proximity density limits to STR homes? Comments indicated that the density of STR homes and the number of occupants impacted neighborhood livability. The final wording, however, was derived from objective data gathered by assessing the effect on neighborhood catchment areas and by surveying other jurisdictions that were similar.
Joe, could I interrupt? Could I interrupt a second? Could you give a definition of catchment and what that means? That's used in here, and that's not a common word for most of us. So can you give us a synonym or an idea of what you mean? Thanks.
Well, we started using the word halo, and then we made it a circle. And then it wasn't really quite a circle, but what we did was look at neighborhoods in terms of a hundred-foot radius to each side. So if you think of, if you're sitting in your living room, it's two houses to one side, two houses to the other side, five houses across the street, and five houses behind you. In most Manzanita neighborhoods, because of the current size of lots, that's about a hundred-foot radius, or about fifteen homes, and it varies by neighborhoods. But we decided to call that thing a catchment area.
Thank you.
As I said, the last two policies are really more proactive than reactive. The proximity policy, as proposed, would affect less than five current catchment areas. However, it would establish a standard for the future that reflects the survey respondents' desires and the STR committee's mission to maintain our community's livability. The occupancy policy actually reflects current practices for most STR homes. But we'll get into more detail in this later. My suggestion is that you let us go through the three, the growth control, the proximity, and the occupancy first, just as a review, and then start with the questions and answers, rather than trying to take each one, because we may never get to the third one. And I think we should at least present it in this meeting for future discussion if we don't get to it today. Does that make sense?
That sounds like a good option. Can I just get a nod or something from councilors? That sounds like a good way to proceed. Everything, nod, thumbs up? Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for considering that approach.
I am going to start this slideshow. Do we have it up?
I have it. I have it. So I'm going to start with the...
Cheryl, before you continue, your voice sounds a little in and out, a little muted. I don't know if you can speak more loudly or get closer to your mic on your end. Just want to make sure we don't miss anything that you've got to say.
Okay. I do, I have a raspy voice, and I apologize for that today. I don't know what's going on. Okay.
Thanks.
So I am, as Joe said, we have three elements to our plan, and I'm going to speak to the first aspect of it, like growth policy. And I know this is a review for all of you, so we will... We can ask questions later. So option A. This is pretty much the option that is the modified status quo. It's based on seventeen percent of total housing within the city and with no numerical ceiling.
Cheryl, you're still going in and out. I think maybe get closer to the mic.
Okay. Is that better?
There's something, there's something going on. It's not your voice. It's, it's, your voice wouldn't be modulating that much. Is there anything you can try on your mic or computer phone?
I thought it was higher than I can. Does that work? Am I doing any better?
It's still not great.
It's something to do with your microphone.
I wonder if it's right. Do you think it's my microphone?
No, that's good. Right there, wherever you're sitting.
It won't move, but hook that. Okay. So we also, so it is seventeen and a half percent in the houses. There's no numerical ceilings. And the only change in this is areas that were previously excluded, like zones, the R4, C1, would now be included. So what we've done is list kind of an overview of the option and then some considerations for you. So option A has the highest potential for increased TLT revenue. The note, noted here, the available, the number of available STR licenses would be determined by the rate of housing development without the city or community input. And currently, the policy 95/4 defines dwelling units of housing. And if this criterion is left in place, the impact of the new apartments, the duplexes, the condos, workforce housing, would all be factored into the percentage, resulting in an exponential growth of available STR licenses. Using current projections, including the Heron's Rest and the sixty-unit workforce housing and middle housing, in the coming years, this would have an exceptional impact throughout the city. We would have, we could potentially have over fourteen more STRs added, and this number in a very short time would be unprecedented. Next slide. Okay, so the HOAs would be factored in. What we, option A does not address the community concerns that were expressed in the 2023 livability survey, which showed that forty-eight percent of full-time and twenty-eight percent of part-time residents feel that there are currently too many STRs in Manzanita. In addition, the increased number of STRs, because of the more development that would occur, is primarily going to go in, is likely to go into the already-dense neighborhoods of North Beach and South Beach, and not likely to go in the areas where the recent development occurs, such as the Highlands. And this would just exacerbate residents' perception that there are too many SFRs. Option A will need frequent monitoring. As the rate of new housing and units accelerates, there's going to be a need to frequently update the number of available STR licenses. The number of STR licenses will change as every new housing units are constructed, even if those housing units do not meet the standard to become STRs. It is the most important of the options, and will need to be accurately managed because it will be changing. And the total number of STRs and the livability factors, such as traffic and density, will grow at an exponential pace. And then option B.
Cheryl, do you want us to ask questions as we move along? Or do you want to present and then take questions?
I think Joe's... Sorry, go ahead, Cheryl.
I think, as Joe mentioned, I'm gonna, I know I'm kind of breezing through this, but then it is something at the end that might make more sense to go back and ask questions so that we can get through all three of the elements of the policy recommendation. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the kind of the status quo option. Option B is the fixed license ceiling, and this would limit STR licenses to a fixed numerical cap. And the one that we, the number we suggested to the city is two-hundred-and-seventy-five. So once the number of STRs is reached, or two-seventy-five, that would... There would be no more new license issued. Option B addresses but doesn't mirror community livability concerns. In the 2023 livability survey results show that forty-one percent of full-time respondents thought that two-hundred-and-sixty-three was the appropriate number of STRs to have, and forty-eight percent of all responders thought that two-hundred-and-sixty-three was too many STRs. Option B will generate more revenue for the city budget. There could be a quick jump in that number from two-sixty-three, which is our current number, to two-seventy-five. However, once that cap is reached, that would be it. There will most likely be less uncertainty with city budget projections, and growth calculations would no longer be required. It is a hard cap that's similar to what's used in other coastal cities. And option B would allow the city to control the growth, not new housing or development practices, because they would have no impact on the available STR licenses.
You're dropping out again, Cheryl. Can you, sorry.
Turn slightly to the left. I know. I think I know what's going on. We had a little incident at our home, and there was some damage around the house, so that might be my... All right, option C. Option C is the option for incremental growth. This option would allow the number of STR licenses to increase at two per year, and a review of this policy would be done when STR licenses have increased by ten, so basically every five years. Option C allows for slightly slower and more controlled pace than what we currently have. Looking back over the last several years, we see that we've added about 2.3 STR homes every year, and this would take us to two. Option C allows for consistent STR growth and revenue projections for city staff. Option C would not be impacted by the new housing developments, such as the apartments or the Heron's Rest or the workforce housing or middle housing. And option C allows the city to have complete control over the growth, and it's simple and easy to explain. And what we've tried to come together with is we believe that if a citywide growth control is clear and consistent, it therefore becomes much easier to explain to the general public and to potential STR license applicants. Those are the three options for the citywide element of our proposal.
And again, if we hold the questions and come back to them, we can move on to just a review of the proximity measurement tool, which Michael's gonna share.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Let me, and that's step number one. Step number two, share the screen. All right, and... How's that looking for everyone?
Good, yeah.
See your header.
All right, so far so good. So Michael Duncan, STR Committee, also, I think I'm supposed to say some type of preamble that these, what I'm saying today are, you know, my own opinions and not representative of the state. And I'm actually on vacation time right now, so not being paid by anyone else to be here. So with that out of the way. All right, well, thanks, Joe and Cheryl, for the introduction and overview of the previously presented growth control policy. And in a similar vein, I'd like to do a little recap on density proximity tool, on the density proximity tool that was presented back in July 2024, but mainly as the preamble to what is the focus of my portion of the presentation today. And that is, how do we consider high occupancy home STRs when thinking about density proximity and in implementing some variant of a proximity tool? So before I dive into the recap, I wanted to take a moment and bring a little context to the presentation. So you may be familiar with this figure here. I think it was in our report. It's the inverted triangle, and at the top you have the core STR policy. And I'll read that here, just remember. City shall, through regulated licensing of STRs, maintain a quantity of STRs that supports neighborhood and community character and livability and supplies the necessary level of revenue as determined by city, right? So that's kind of what we're, the framework, the starting point. And how we do that in a practical sense, right, is that we have something that regulates the number of short-term rentals and manages it at a citywide level. And that's the seventeen and a half percent that we've used for a while now. But when we think about it spatially, where the policy has the appropriate level of impact, you have policy that addresses short-term rentals and their impact for the growth control policy at a citywide level. And then you also have it at a neighborhood level. And I guess I'm sharing my screen. Do I need to minimize that? Is that better?
You're good.
Okay. And then next door to you, so each different policy area addresses different needs. The city, the street, the door. And so these don't necessarily have to build on top of each other, but I think it's important that we think of this spatially, and they certainly can work in concert with each other. And that's how we've kind of structured it today. So let me see if I can, so we are here, right? Density proximity policy, and that is at the neighborhood level. So... And that's where we're going to be focused on for this portion of the presentation. And in particular, I'll provide a brief density proximity recap, and then we'll focus on high occupancy home STRs and how they figure into the use of a proximity tool. So... Right, so that's going to be the overview here. So looking back at the 2023 Short-Term Livability Survey, we pulled some community sentiment from that. And that is, these are qualitative comments that were submitted by respondents to that city. So some folks said that they didn't want to have to worry about who's next door. They want to know their neighbors well. They want to be able to borrow a cup of sugar. Others said short-term rental occupants by my house are respectful. But then we also had that said while their STRs are quiet and mellow and enjoying their vacation, some feel entitled to behave as though they are in a party zone and without consideration of being in a neighborhood, right? And so I share these to point out that generally, sentiment is that that we as a community want a balance of residential uses in their neighborhood. They want the cup of sugar as well as the respectful STR. And that there's a need for neighborhood-level policy to address this sentiment, and that density proximity is the appropriate response to that need. Like, that's our take here. So we have quantitative information as well from that survey. So the quantitative aspect of that survey indicated that a strong majority of full-time and part-time residents that they would be in favor of regulating density proximity limits. And so that was a major charge. So that's... So that when the short-term rental committee was put together, when the treaty was put into place, we heard from the community, we heard from city leaders and from the survey that we had to look at addressing this issue of density. And so we looked at around at peer cities, and actually, we have a neighbor to the north of us. Seaside is already doing something about this. They're addressing density by using proximity as a measure. So that proximity of short-term rentals is implemented in different zones. And they have residential neighborhoods that in some cases allow thirty percent or fifty percent density. And so they look at those STRs, and then within a hundred feet of applicant's property line, they say, well, how many of those other homes nearby them are STRs? And if it's over that threshold, then they do not permit that STR. So we similarly proposed a proximity tool. And what is great is that the city is already using this web map, a base map, to help manage STRs spatially where they're located. And I believe the code enforcement officer uses it as well currently. And with the help of a local resident, the committee put together a web map proximity tool using off-the-shelf software to map a catchment area, right? So when we were talking about that earlier, kind of like a fishing net, you cast out your catchment area, right? Around the short-term, the proposed short-term rental, and then we calculate the number of STRs within that hundred-foot radius. So back when this was presented in July, we looked into proximity being used as a measure of density. And in particular, we looked, you know, the approach we were using was that no more than five short-term rentals within a hundred-foot catchment area would be permitted, and that this proximity would be applied citywide with the exception of C1 and LC zones. So let's see the proximity tool in practice, right? Here's the hundred-foot radius, and if you look at this, there are four STRs in there. And this would be an example of an approved scenario. And in this one, there's already one, two, three, four, five, six. So if they were to apply for this, like the applicant, the orange square in the middle, would use the tool and say, nope, not allowed. And then keep in mind that this was done using, you know, the computer tool, but it doesn't have to be. You can print out a map and draw a circle using a compass. It can be lo-fi if we need it to. There are many different ways.
Michael, can I just interrupt you for a second? They're not allowed is not allowed yet. They would be on a waiting list the same as if there were more than the total number of STRs allowed in the growth policy.
Thank you. Yeah, great clarification to me. So I think before I move on to the next slide, I was just going to say that there's many different ways to implement this. But we have a proximity tool, a draft proximity tool that's out there that's being used in its draft form, not like in official sense, but we've used it to play around with, I mean, you plug in any address in there, and it appears to be an efficient way of doing just that. So you're probably a bit familiar with the content that I just spoke to. A big part of today's focus is on high occupancy home STRs. And we felt there was a need to look at high occupancy home STRs and how they would function with the proximity tool. So taking a step back, why define and manage higher occupancy home STRs? Well, one is livability, right? High occupancy home STRs amplify the effects of livability, impact of livability for those who are living in close proximity to those STRs. The second would be safety. They present safety challenges as indicated by fire and safety representatives. So these impacts are felt directly at a neighborhood level and to those living adjacent to a high occupancy STR. So think of it as going back to that inverted triangle. It's kind of like the bottom half-ish. And the last that I'd note is that there's currently no policy in the city to define what a high occupancy home STR is or accounts for their impact. And so that's what we're trying to do here with this proximity tool, is that we're tweaking that approach that we put out there in July with the five, you know, with the five-per-one-hundred-foot catchment area. And we're recommending that high occupancy STRs be counted as two STRs within the catchment area. And I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but I wanted to maybe cut to the chase there. So there are a couple, a few quick considerations that help shape this modified approach for high occupancy home STRs when using the proximity tools. So the proximity tool that was outlined in July 2024 does not define or differentiate between high occupancy home STRs or the standard STRs. We also noted that the current average permitted short-term rental occupancy limit is 9.6. And the number of short-term rentals that currently have five or more bedrooms is fifteen. So we kind of took all that into consideration. And we are proposing that short-term rentals permitted to house the number of occupants in excess of the current address, current average. So that would be five or more sleeping rooms. These would be considered high occupancy, or, you know, use a formal term, a high occupancy home STR. And high occupancy home STRs would then be counted as two within the hundred-foot catchment area. And we wanted to see how this looks like in practice and to see how the proximity tool would function with that. And so we kind of did a high-level analysis here. And so when we look at all of what we have proposed designating as high occupancy home STRs, there are currently fifteen short-term rentals that have five or more bedrooms in the community. And using the proximity tool for those high occupancy homes that's producing a catchment area around those STRs, that nine of those fifteen would still allow for growth. So this approach, the high occupancy homes, STRs count as two approach, doesn't necessarily sign the growth. In fact, using the two count as one approach, there are currently two STRs that meet the five-per-one-hundred-foot catchment and four that exceed the threshold. So these would be managed through attrition, and we haven't proposed taking away any licenses. That's not part of this, recommended as part of this proposal. In fact, if you use the two-per-year incremental growth management approach Cheryl noted earlier, it would take almost five years to fill in all those catchment areas. So it's preventative, more than anything else, but we're not going to see, you know, dramatic impacts, you know, at year one. So what we're really aiming to do is guide density in a way that accounts for these high occupancy homes. So back in July 24, the STR committee was asked by council to consider the following options. Option one would be counting high occupancy STRs as two, which is what I just covered. The other option we were asked to look into was a proximity tool approached using the number of occupants. I think the number that was floated was fifty occupants per catchment area. So we did that. We used that draft tool, and we put it in a neighborhood to see, you know, what potentially could happen, what's that scenario look like. So we explored this neighborhood. This is a real neighborhood. These are real STRs, those little blue stars that you see there. And there are four in this current catchment area. And if somebody were to apply for that middle one, orange one, it would be allowed. But if it was a high occupancy home, it would not be allowed. So if we were to implement a proximity tool using the number of occupants under the current occupancy limit of two per room plus four, you could actually have six STRs in that catchment area. And if you were to reduce the number of permitted occupants to two per room plus two, which is what the presentation will talk about in a moment, you could potentially have eight short-term rentals within this catchment area. So again, looking at that example, there are four licensed STRs within that catchment area. The proposed five, the proposed approach of five per hundred-foot would allow for one more. And if this was a high occupancy home, it would not be allowed. And if we were to limit those STRs to a five-per-one-hundred-foot catchment area, it would result in thirty-four occupants. And if it wasn't clear, those numbers that you see here are the actual permitted occupants based on number of rooms, right? So if we were to use the option number two approach, where the limit was fifty occupants per occupant catchment area, it would allow for eight short-term rentals. So the proximity tool may result in a higher number of short-term rentals within a catchment area if you were to use occupants versus just simple number of STRs. So with option one, it helps consistently achieve that balance that we keep talking about of housing and residential uses to maintain livability for both long-term tenants or second homes as well as short-term rentals. So to summarize, what is being proposed is a modification to the proximity tool that was presented back in July. The short-term rentals having five or more bedrooms, bedrooms or sleeping areas are to be considered high occupancy home short-term rentals, and that high occupancy home short-term rentals be counted as two short-term rentals when using this proximity tool density approach. We would also recommend, it's kind of a cumbersome way to say this, but the proximity tool would not consider the number of permitted occupants within a catchment area, but rather the number of short-term rentals. And that was a lot to talk about, but we got through it. Thanks for hanging in there, and I'll hand this over to Joe.
You gotta stop sharing.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, and lastly is occupancy, and fortunately, that's the, I think, easiest to explain. So hopefully I can get back to it. Okay, occupancy. We talked about occupancy and putting a limit on number, the maximum number of people in each home. And we took this partly because of the livability... And we took this partly because of the livability survey that indicated that congestion and traffic noise were key issues impacting livability and that the number of occupants were directly tied to this. While we can't tackle citywide traffic or parking, we did look at various metrics to determine both the impact on current neighborhoods and also the future impacts. As we said earlier, while the impetus might have been sentiment, that livability word that I'm not wild about, our recommendations came after a lot of data-driven research. The bottom line is that although some do, most STR owners do not currently advertise at maximum occupancy. We went through advertisements. We also asked some of the short-term rental management companies. And as you can see, they don't. On the other hand, they could. So the first part of the puzzle is to indemnify the current practice, not ordinance, by changing the limits from two per bedroom plus four to two per bedroom plus two. So one of the things we looked at was the current household size in Manzanita. It averages about 1.8. In Oregon, it's about 2.4, and nationally, it's about 3. But that's not really what a short-term rental is. Usually, when you rent a short-term rental, you come down with more than just yourself. We also looked at other jurisdictions. In Tillamook, it's two per bedroom plus two with a maximum of 12. Seaside is three per bedroom, and they base this on hotel rooms, because most hotel rooms allow you to have three. They, when I talked to the code enforcement person in Seaside, he said that his rationale in doing this was that they wanted SCR rental ownership as a means to pay a mortgage or subsidize a part-time vacation home rather than being mostly a business venture, and they felt by limiting the number of people in the home that helped to do that. We looked at Ben, talked to some people there, and his rationale in part was safety concerns and fire safety concerns. And I think Cheryl talked to some of our local people and got that same suggestion that two per bedroom plus two is much better for fire safety, getting the people out. Palm Springs is two per bedroom with a maximum of 12. And as you can see, it was designed to limit car parking and traffic and diminish the number of parties. These are some of the things that agents said. They don't adjust price based on number of occupants. They find that proximity to the beach and town and restaurants and the things like hot tubs and decks are really more important considerations from renters and the maximum number of occupants. And as I said, the majority of STRs already list below the maximum. So our objective was to manage the number of occupants. We wanted to do something that could have a reduction in the number of STR occupants within each catchment area without relating it to that proximity. We wanted to try to reduce traffic, noise and parking, and also respond to community sentiment and do what's being done in the other areas. So our recommendation is the maximum number of occupants permitted to stay should include all occupants. There is apparently no software for the short-term rental companies to count children. So we want to make it as simple as possible because it makes it much easier to understand. So it's all occupants except infants under the age of two. The maximum number of occupants permitted to stay should not exceed a total of two occupants per bedroom plus two. And the maximum number, regardless of the number of bedrooms, should be 14. And we are done, and we will entertain any or questions.
I have a feeling, before Brad starts, I have a feeling it's going to be useful to go back to the presentation.
We can do that.
A lot of potential for confusion on points, so let's be flexible about that. So maybe if we just take the start, beginning with Brad, to pose the question, let's see where in the presentation it'd be useful to pull up for us to be able to see. For this session, it's more helpful to see that document than to see each other, I think. And we'll just adjust it if that's not working, so.
Okay.
Brad, go ahead.
When you talked about option A with 17.5%, you had estimated with the growth that we're expecting with these new developments approximately 14 more licenses could be added relatively quickly. Is that number the same when we add in the C1, LC and R4 licenses, which are currently at 17.8%? Was that considered in that figure?
No, I believe the 14.
I'm looking on my notes here, and I'm finding my. I think the answer, I'm trying to find the spot that you talked about that. I think the answer is yes. Because even though the answer is yes, we're still, we're still, right now, we're still at about 17 and a half, 18% if you do it citywide as opposed to excluding the C1, R4, LC. The reason that it would be the 14 more is that if you add Heron's Rest, which is 20-something dwelling units, and the 60-plus whatever new builds are going on, you're getting very close to 80, 90 new dwelling units. And that's where that 14 came from, 20 and a half percent of 80 or 90 new dwelling units.
And I do have questions on B and C, but I did have a question specific to the measurement of dwelling units. So when we talk about dwelling units, if we built a building with 10 apartments in it, that would be considered 10 dwelling units for measurement purposes, correct?
Correct, even though as apartments, only one of those units would be able to be a short-term rental because of the ordinance that an owner can only have one short-term rental.
Gotcha. That's clear. Now, another consideration for this count, let's say I have a property with a house and a separate guesthouse. If potentially in future rules are changed to allow ADUs in Manzanita, and I converted that guesthouse into an ADU, would my home and the ADU be considered two units or one?
I'm gonna throw that one to Layla. It would be two.
So if that rule changes and we had 50 people that decided they wanted to switch up their property and have the ability to have an ADU, we would be adding 50 to the number of properties if we did a percentage-based, so that could increase even more if that happens in the future.
Yes.
Rather significantly. Okay, clear. Just to note, option B, with the fixed license of 275, we're still talking about a potential jump immediately similar to option A, maybe even quicker. Is that a correct observation?
The potential is there for that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear.
In.
No, I heard Brad. I didn't hear the response. Thanks.
Yes.
Yes, the response is yes. Sorry.
So option B would potentially give us an increase quicker than option A, and then option C, of course, my overall view of that is it will allow for continued growth as the community continues to grow, as it will in housing units, but it is probably the most controlled option with two per year.
I agree with that. I think that's correct.
Correct. Although, to be fair, this number of 275 is a number that the council can change and decide. The council could decide, let's make it 250. They could decide, let's make it 263, you know, or whatever the current number is, in which case it would have an effect on revenue, a negative effect on revenue, but it would not have the increased growth. It's a balance. It's a balancing thing.
I gotta offer a couple of just thoughts, just based on data. So even if you did increase the cap to 275 today, the demand isn't there to fill those 15 permits. We currently have a waiting list, I think, of two people, two permits. So eventually that would get filled up, but it doesn't mean it will happen overnight. The second is, I think there's a lot of wisdom in sort of finding a more controlled method for assigning permits. And I think if you use one that's kind of based on historical facts, which is that prior to sort of housing boom we've seen over the last three years, the average growth, I think, as one of the committee members mentioned, was about 2.3 units per year. That's not happening now, right? Because we're getting a lot more housing, and I think that the percentage-based approach would be inconsistent with both the demand for permits. So I think I just wanted to dispel any kind of false assumption that, oh, we have this huge dearth of people who are waiting and honking ready to get permits. It's just not the case. It hasn't been the case since we had the freeze. So, you know, I think this option for two, an increase of two per year actually reflects kind of the growth that we saw over the, probably the 10 years prior to the housing boom, which we saw an increase in, you know, the number of units over a pretty short period of time. I think in total, we saw about 25 housing units built between 2022 and 2024, the end of 2024. So we saw about 12 units per year, whereas previous years, that was probably half or less that number. So just a couple of data points there for you to consider.
Thank you.
12 housing units that were built during that, for example, year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
When you said there were 12 units, you were talking about 12 housing units that were built?
So 12, yeah. So we, the data I have, looking at April of 2022, there were 25 less housing units than there are now, so.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because option C is not based on housing growth at all. It's just based on two, two units, two additional STR licenses being available a year. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and I was just saying, past history, prior to that boom in housing, which also wanted to sort of dispel, it's been, you know, about a dozen units per year. We were issuing about two permits per year prior to that, so it's connected to some sort of data. I just want to highlight that you guys looked at that data, and that's where that number came from.
Thank you.
Next question was in Michael's presentation when he showed us the catchments. The second example was one that would be denied. And Joe, I didn't catch your point. You said something without density. And I just wanted to clarify that in that example, I think we had five permits there. So you said without density put in place, there could potentially be a sixth or seventh rental license issued in that catchment. Was that correct? Is that what I heard you say? Okay. And last thought, which you answered the question for, but I'll just throw it out there in case anybody else had that thought, is my initial reaction to these high occupancy locations counting as two, that is for the purpose of potentially granting a license, yes or no? That doesn't have any impact on the number of licenses, meaning that household would not be required to have two licenses to operate at that occupancy. It's just for count purposes.
Definitely. It's just for the count. There's no additional fees or licenses. It's just the count.
And the other thing that crossed my mind was with that occupancy, I was thinking maybe they pay a higher licensing fee. But I believe, Joe, in your follow-up presentation from your rental folks, it did not appear that people are charging. If they're renting to five people, they're charging 200 a night. If they're renting to 10 people, they're charging 300 a night. That it's a rental for the house, not the number of occupants. So to me, to me, that cleared up the question that that wouldn't really be fair to do that if they're not charging.
Just say that again, Brad. You lost me on that last point.
My initial thought was if you had a house that held 15 people and you were counted as two licenses, that potentially the license fee you pay would be more expensive.
I see.
Because you have more occupants, and Joe cleared up with her research that that house, be it two occupants or 15, is renting for the same price. So to me, that wouldn't wouldn't be fair or correct to charge somebody more because they're not charging more for a rental license fee.
Thanks.
That was it for me. Thank you. Questions answered.
Thank you. Can I go to Tom next to see if you've got questions or, and/or comments? You know what? Let's do it this way. Let's take a round of specific questions to clarify presentation, then let's do a round of kind of more implications thinking for each counselor. So what does this bring? I saw your eyebrows go together, Tom. So I'm saying this round, we can make it specific questions like Brad was just asking, and then we can pull back and ask or think about some broader things, like the impact of housing changes in the community, impacts of revenue, things that are kind of a different kind of question than a specific clarification, the kind of things that Brad just did. And if that doesn't work, never mind. We'll just go ahead. So what have you got for questions, Tom?
I've got one of each.
All right, go for it.
The, you know, Joe and Cheryl, when we did our personal session, so that I wouldn't look like an idiot sitting here today. You know, we talked a lot about parking, or I talked a lot about parking, and the takeaway I got was that really we're not talking about parking and vehicles so much. And as I was prepping for this, I did see in our current ordinance 10-3 in section 4C, a standard associated with parking. And really, I gotta say, having a short-term rental next door to me, I don't really care how many people are in the house, as long as it's not a party gone wild. But when there's 17 cars associated with that house, and that's rare, that becomes an issue. So the current parking standard says they must provide a minimum of two spaces for two vehicles for each home. They can have additional off-street parking. And then they're authorized to have one vehicle on street. And that's where, I don't think we've really touched on vehicular traffic and the clogging that occurs with the parking situation. You know, if it's a family with a dozen kids, you know, that's one thing. If it's, you know, six couples going in on a house together, it's a whole different ballgame. And so what is your, what are your thoughts about those different things?
Well, first of all, we do have that in the ordinance. According to Sergeant Mike, it's not really enforceable. The on-street parking isn't really enforceable because I can have a party at my house, you can have a party at your house, and we can have, we can fill up the street. I mean, the street is available for anybody to park on. So we really, as a short-term rental committee, we decided it's not, we can't do anything about parking. That's really not in our bailiwick. So the ordinance is there. Really, probably should. really probably shouldn't be at this point. I mean, it needs, it needs work and it needs help from the city. And I think we all, we all know that.
Yeah, okay. So so we've got a standard that's unenforceable and and that's something that we'll try to deal with sometime in later iterations of this.
Not by the short-term rental committee, by the city and you.
Throw down here that I think we already are dealing with it. And I would agree that we went round and round about this when we applied the new standard. It's enforceable to an extent, right? So if anybody's parked illegally, we have code enforcement, we have police that can handle that. We just need to be made aware of it or we need to see it. So over a year since we've had Max in the code enforcement position, he's responded to nine complaints related to short-term rentals and parking. So I think we're handling it the way that we can, as best as we can, to the extent that we, again, have police and we have code enforcement that can address that issue. So it is a very difficult thing to manage. We don't have even time stays in our downtown for parking enforcement. So managing it in residential neighborhoods is, it's not only challenging, I just don't think it's possible. So, so we won't be doing anything further on that, but I also don't want you to walk away thinking we're not doing anything about it. We've actually, I think, made some real big strides in a positive way in managing particularly short-term rentals with respect to the parking issue.
Okay.
Right. One more thing. And then the point of the, the point in the ordinance of laying out the number of parking places that are required is to further reduce the maybe unusual circumstances where people are spilling over into the street. And that was, it's hard for people to take sometimes when they're applying and they're not aware of it, you know, the amount of parking you have to provide. So. Yeah, that's a good point. And if I could even add to that, which is actually when Brad brought up the question about would two units, would your, if you converted to an ADU, would that unit then count in sort of the the denominator of the calculation for short-term rentals? The answer is yes. But if you wanted to say turn another unit into an STR, you have to meet the requirement in the ordinance, which has those two off-street parking spaces required. So just something to think about as you start thinking about ordinance amendments for, to be compliant with House Bill two thousand and one. Those off-street parking have to be dedicated to a short-term rental on a site. So that will actually kind of wipe out a bunch of housing units that get built to be considered as a short-term rental.
And Leila, that's, that same rule applies if it was a private residence, somebody decided to do that, you have to add those parking spaces as well, correct?
Yeah, you do.
So that's a little bit of a point. Could it be a consideration to have the short-term rental issue like in windshield parking passes? So that they become more easily identifiable as associated with the rental, just like a hotel does?
Can I just ask that we park that? Because we're here to, we're not here for that. So it's a good, it's a good observation.
I would say we explored it and, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So parking is parking. Park will always be long conversations. Parking satisfies very few people, no matter what you end up doing. And that's not what we're here for today. Although, I mean, it logically, as you've said, Tom, raises questions as we're talking about occupancy. So, okay.
Well, I'm also just trying to get an idea about when we get to the point of amending ten of, ten dash three, what the full panoply of amendments are that we're going to be asked to enact.
Okay. And right now, based on this work, we're not asking for anything else for parking.
Right. I see that.
Yeah, okay. What, what's your other question or what else comes to mind?
Well, the other thing was about budgetary impacts. I'll hold that till later.
Okay. Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah. So I, I want to focus first and maybe solely at this point on the citywide growth issues. So option A for me is not an option. I don't really see a good reason to support continuing the percentage-based cap. So I'm, I'm looking at options B and C. And the good news is that since the freeze went into effect, we've had a really flat level of growth in STRs, obviously. It could have been a little bit different than it is, but it seems like we have just about exactly the same number, maybe one more now than we had when we instituted the freeze. So if we have three years' worth of data at a particular number of STRs, I think we need to take a hard look at that data and, and understand. And the data I'm talking about is the, the revenue that was derived from the city from that level of STRs. So I don't, I don't, I didn't see that in the report. I'm not sure that you were asked to do anything along those lines, but that data is available. We have it. And I really, I guess I'd like to see what the impact has been of having effectively a hard cap of two sixty-two or two sixty-three for three years. And to not only see how that's impacted revenue, but to see if the revenue is still coming in at the same rate in each of the four quarters. Because I, I think Leila made a great point not too long ago that I've been thinking about. And that is that we don't have any evidence of an unmet demand on the investor side, the investors, the people that own STRs, the people that build properties to be STRs. We seem to be meeting their demand at this point. If we weren't, there'd be long waiting lists for permits. Then the other demand issue is, are we meeting the demand that exists for people to stay in Manzanita? And that's hard to pin down. We're not sure. But there's sort of an implicit assumption that we need more STRs to create more revenues. So there must be more demand to use those STRs. And we've had a lot of conversations about how our revenue can be increased in several different ways. It can be increased if the STRs are occupied more nights during the year. It can be increased if the rental rate is raised. It can be increased if the tax rate is raised. And maybe it can be increased if we just add more buildings. But I don't know that we know for sure that that last factor is any better in terms of revenue production than the other three factors. And so I'm trying to learn as much as I can about what the impact has been on the city fiscally since we put the freeze in place. And I just want to put those numbers together so we can see them. I know we've had, you know, some fluctuation on those numbers. But I don't think it's been substantial. So anyway, that's, I need to figure out what those numbers look like and what they mean to make a choice between options B and C on the citywide growth proposal. And then on the, on the, the density issue. I guess, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a very attractive approach, but I'm not the one who would be trying to implement it or manage it. And so I guess I need to understand better from staff, what kind of a burden that would place on staff and how difficult it would be. My gut tells me it's certainly doable. And I, and I do think that it's a significant issue for us to, to look at because the I think the reason we continue to have so much of a perception issue on, on impact that STRs have on livability is in the numbers that you guys have presented. By the way, I want to really thank the committee for the hard work that you've done. It's enormously helpful and impressive. And I think that city councils should look for other opportunities to put citizens to use in this manner because it's really, really difficult for us to do the kind of deep dive into any of the many issues that come our way that this committee has done on STR. So that's, that's really been helpful. But in your numbers, you tell us that the average occupancy in STR in Manzanita is about ten. And you tell us that the average household size is about two. And for every four full-time households of two, there are three STRs in town. So it's not hard for me to understand how all of these households of two feel encroached upon by STRs with an average occupancy of ten, when there's three of them for every four full-time houses. And I don't think it matters so much how many noise complaints we have or how many citations we issue. It's just a issue of saturation. There's just a lot of STRs living amongst the full-time residential houses. And so I think we're always going to have a level of discontent on the livability side. And I think that's why we're wrestling with this density approach. So I, I guess, I mean, I really think we've heard great information from the committee. I think I need to hear more from staff about what the practical impact would be of having that kind of a rule, what it would mean, how difficult it would be, how easy it would be, et cetera. On the occupancy issue, I mean, I certainly agree that with the notion of counting the supersized houses as two for occupancy purposes, or density purposes, I should say, and lowering the occupancy. I mean, I personally, I would love to see the occupancy lowered to closer to what the, the average is citywide. But that's, that's obviously, at least from the committee's perspective, that would be too large a jump down. But I do think we should continue to remind ourselves that at the heart of this conversation that we will always have in Manzanita, you know, we talk about why do people want to come here? Why do they want to spend their vacation dollars here? Because we have this quaint village feel to us. One of the reasons we have a quaint village feel to us is that the average household is one point eight five people. So if we keep inundating the quaint neighborhoods with houses that can sleep ten and twelve and fifteen people, we're, we're attacking the fabric of what makes Manzanita more desirable. Not just to visitors, but obviously to full-time residents. So again, it's, it's great work, a lot of information. I think what we need to have in a, maybe a second workshop is I mean, we've, we've had to use our time today and will continue to use it to get clarification on, on information from the committee or from staff. But at some point, we just need to have a conversation among, we really need to be able to, instead of being presented with information and asking clarifying questions, the five of us have to have a conversation and sort of figure out if there's a consensus in any one direction on these three or four or five really critical issues that you guys have done to work on. So I'm going to stop there. But Leila, if you can or want to, or maybe defer to another time, address those two questions of how, what, what's the revenue look like during the three-year freeze? And what kind of staff impact would the the density measure have?
Yeah, I can, we can certainly pull the data, but I can tell you, because I track it every month. We've been holding fairly steady. We've had some down quarters, some quarters where we're consistent with the previous year, and then quarters where we're a little bit above. So last quarter was a little bit above. But we've been tracking pretty steady. You're correct. We have two hundred and sixty permits now. We have one open permit. Or I'm sorry, in December, we had two available permits in the capped zones. So we've been able to maintain some consistency. And we currently have two hundred and sixty STRs. We did have two hundred and sixty-three at one point, and those were issued in the commercial area. But we're currently back down to two hundred and sixty. That incremental growth, I think, has been helpful and important, but it also, again, we're back down to two sixty. And last quarter, we were consistent with where we were last year. So, and I think we were, we had a very low year. Actually, we were quite a bit lower on STRs last year at this time, just because of the renewal. I think that fee kicked several people out and then other people came in. But I can pull that data and have that available. We'll, we'll work on that. So we'll look quarter by quarter back to when the cap went into effect. I think that would be quarter one of twenty twenty-two through, I think, Q four, twenty twenty-four. One thing I will note, though, is, as was mentioned earlier, we've approved at least, you know, Heron's Rest has been approved. And then we do have a pretty large project coming in. Just one consideration is that our service needs are going to increase exponentially, right? So if we see those units get constructed and we see the sixty units get approved and get constructed, that is actually going to increase the city's population by twenty to thirty percent. And that is new, like that has not happened here yet. And so as we're thinking about needs and service requirements, that's going to put some budgetary, you know, it's going to have budgetary impact. So we're not, whereas over the last ten years or so, we've been sort of sustaining the same population number. And those kinds of changes actually do have pretty big impacts on staff and services, particularly police services, I would say, and then the additional roads and other things that come in related to that. So it's just something to think about that even though we've been able to maintain our existing revenue, we've been serving the same amount of population. I expect that will change. That will also change to some extent incrementally over time as we implement the middle housing code, right? It's not going to happen overnight, but we will start to see things change over time. I think the next ten years, we're going to see some growth. And so as we're thinking about this, as you're thinking about this, I just would encourage you to have that. And I'm sure you all are in, in the back of your mind, that is not business as usual anymore. And so even if we have been sustaining revenue at the same level, we either have to find alternative revenue sources or we just need to be mindful that the service demands and needs are going to increase. It's just something that, that comes to mind for me. I can talk about the implementation aspect of it. I mean, we can do whatever, like, it's, it's not, we can implement it. It will have staff impacts. It does have impact on, we don't have the in-house. I'm actually the only person that knows how to run this kind of system at the moment. Doesn't mean that can't be done, but we would need some real time to implement that. But I have a very capable staff that's capable of learning and learning quickly. But that would not be an insignificant thing, but it is totally a possible thing for us to do. I think the bigger question, and it's just something we're used to, but I probably would need a little bit more help with it, is is answering questions, like even now, trying to explain a waitlist. So now having to explain a waitlist, a proximity measure, an occupancy measure, like, it's all stuff we can do, but it will have impacts. And so we will likely need to either hire that. So add additional staff to manage it. And I'm not saying this one task would be the only thing that, you know, would increase and require a full FTE or anything. But I just do want to be mindful, it will have impacts on staff. And we would just need to put together a thoughtful and reasonable timeline in terms of, of implementing it. But again, I have full faith and confidence in my team to be able to do that. We just don't have the resources in-house to operate or maintain such a system at this time. But it's totally, it's doable.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just, I also want to put a pin in this issue. I don't think we need to talk about it extensively, but as we go forward, some of these, well, a lot of these issues are obviously tied directly to the issue of how much revenue the city derives. And we are doing this at the very same time that the county is contemplating its potential increase in the ballot measure in, in May. And so it feels like we need, I, I would need to know the outcome of that process and what that's going to mean for us fiscally before I can make a good logical. decision on cap reform or whatever we call options B and C. So, you know, I, I, I would love us to be able to reach the three-year mark of the freeze and, and implement a new path forward, but ironically, right at that very moment, we're about to do that, we get a new variable thrown at us. And so I think we're kind of in a situation where we may need an extra two months to figure that out.
Leila, can I ask, when you get those numbers, I think it would be helpful for the council not to go back to three years since the cap, but to go back pre-COVID, because there was a huge jump in 2020 that I think was an anomaly. So if you could go back to maybe like 2018, just to see, does that?
Well, I think the question I feel like I'm being asked is, we know that, I mean, we know we had a huge jump, but we've sustained that jump since. And I've shown that chart. I think what I was asked to do is to look at the impact of this particular freeze on STR revenue. And so in my mind, that goes back to Q1 of 2022. Because we all know we went up and we've, we've held steady or increased. We've kind of hit a, we're plateaued effectively at this point because we, we tend to fluctuate between 5 and 10%, 5% plus or minus that average since 2020. So I think unless council wants me to do that, I feel like that's kind of a foregone conclusion. We are up here and that is sustained even since we've implemented the freeze.
Okay, I just, I thought it relates to the, the option C, the, the two per year. I, I think Jerry, I think what you said is correct. There's so many other factors that come into how much a home is charging and how much revenue we're getting. And I, I don't know what the full picture is. I'm, I'm I'm trusting that you know more financial implications than, than I can guess at, but.
Yeah, I want to go back to Tom. And because you were holding on some things. Go ahead, Tom, and then Brad.
Thank you.
I was just leaning up against the wall over here and it's
You said earlier you had two things. You took care of one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Jerry just asked the question. I was curious to know about financial impact. So, but while we're, while I've got the microphone, the, the two option B and C, I tend to agree with Jerry on A's not really on the table as far as I'm concerned. But so if we limited it to two per year, we, in effect, over the next five years, we'd be going up to about the 275 number that we would otherwise be authorizing. Is there a reason to limit to two per year if we're going to end up going to about 275 anyways? Are there years when we get four applicants that would get washed out because we've limited ourselves to two?
Can I ask a clarifying question before I answer that? Is the proposal citywide or are we talking about just the areas that are currently capped?
Yeah, mute, Joe.
Citywide for a couple of reasons. One is, one is kind of similar to what the, I can't remember the name of the group that the planning commission was listening to on Monday. If their proposal, their, their suggestion was get rid of the R2, R3, R4 SSR zone and call it one big zone. And that's kind of what we were doing with the, right now, the R4 was not part of the 17 and a half percent cap, but it was part of the freeze. And one of the things that the committee looked at was that if we're trying to address the number of short-term rentals in the city, that should include the whole city, including the, the commercial and the limited commercial. On the other hand, if we want to drive more short-term rentals to the commercial zone and the LC, then we can do that by not limiting their proximity, not having them be part of the proximity measurement, the, the 100 foot catchment area. So yes, all three of the gross controls would be citywide. But the proximity measurement would not include the commercial zones. So that would, that would allow the commercial zones to be more concentrated with short-term rentals and the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I, I do want to just, I do think having, so tourism and hotels and short-term rentals are the city's economic engine, right? So having them be able to develop in the commercial zone without hindrance, so without a cap or a proximity measure is what I would advise. Because that is where they're expected and it is the comparable cities that you guys all looked at, Seaside Bend, others have very robust commercial districts that have significant numbers of hotels and significant income from the commercial area. So there's a couple of properties, for example, right now in Lanita that were developed into housing that will be short-term rentals. And so I would just, you know, my advice would be that that is left out of the cap. I think we are going to see some proposals for consolidation of the several zones that we have for residential. And so I think it's fully appropriate to have some form of cap and control measure in the residential zones for the reasons that you talked about and the reasons that the community has brought up. But I do think excluding the commercial zone, the C1 zone would be my, my recommendation that would allow for additional growth and it's an apples to orange comparison even to seaside because, because of that very big difference. And their property tax militerate is in some cases 16 times ours. So I just think that's not an apples to oranges comparison to some of these cities that have very strict requirements because they have way other sources of revenue, whereas we are, whether we like it or not, we are a tourist economy that primarily relies upon transit, and I want to say it's transient lodging tax. It's not the short-term rental tax. So it'd be great if we could all adopt the, the proper discuss, like how to talk about that because hotels are part of that mix. And so that's why hotels are allowed in certain areas and not. So I think if we allow hotels, we should also allow short-term rentals to be built there as well.
I, I agree, Leila, that we can't, apples and oranges are correct in seaside. We, one of the other reasons that we decided to include the entire area was, again, that simplicity thing, just to make it easier to understand, but also because our, our commercial area is so different from seaside or Cannon Beach. It's small. There aren't that many places that could be short-term rentals right now. There, we do have, that is where the hotels are. And this does not affect hotel revenue at all, or, 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 or the number of hotels it would be. But one of the things that we looked at in, in deciding, do we want to include the commercial area in our total package was that there's about 30 right now. There's 30 short-term rentals in the commercial zones. And there's maybe the opportunity to have 10 more, but they're really, I mean, if you, if you just walk up and down Main Street, where would you put them? There aren't that, Laneta, there aren't that many places. So we just thought for simplicity sake, let's just make it one package. You could go the other way around. It wouldn't have that much effect. You would have to, if you wouldn't be able to, I, I wouldn't use the 275 number. I would take it down, subtract the commercial zone numbers from there. But you could do that. We just felt it was not the easiest way to explain.
I'm not sure. Well, I want to ask, I know, I know Linda is here. Linda, do you want to just let us know with a signal if you have anything you want to ask or say? I've got some things, but I'm going to wait and just check with everybody first.
No, I think it's going to throw.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Excuse me? Oh, okay. I thought I missed somebody. Also, for those of you who don't know, Linda's worked behind the scenes as the counselor responsible for connecting with this committee for a, a long time now. So Linda's been quite involved. So just so you know that, if you weren't already aware of it. So I think, so this has been useful today. I'm not, I'll just give, you can get a read from me in terms of where I'm at. Jerry, Jerry shared some things and, and Tom gave his two cents on at least where you're, you're, you're getting ready to move away from one of the options in the, in the first one, when it comes to the A, B, and C option. Yeah, I'm, I, I unfortunately, because I would love to get, I would love to get my own mind in order on this and be ready to say, here's my, here's my opinion, here's my point of view, here's what I'm ruling out. Here's what I'm not. I am, I, I am finding this one particularly challenging in that respect. And it's not a reflection of the work of the committee or staff. It's a work, it's a reflection of just the the importance of this as it relates to the revenue stream for the city and for all of us and for city services. Its importance as it relates to both the fact and feelings that people have in the community. Jerry did a nice job of laying out the feeling that people can have and where it, it comes from, you know, in the sense that it's not a made up thing. It's, it's a real thing. It's a, it's a perception of where, of how people feel about the community, whether that's their block or their neighbor's block or a couple of blocks over. There's a lot to sort out in that because there's, you know, emotion runs high on this and as decision makers, we have to parse through that. We have to acknowledge the emotion is there, but we also have to look at what the numbers tell us. And this is a, this is a slippery area to get after. I mean, we talked about in a, one of the preparatory meetings, you know, we, we said, well, we asked the question, what can the amount of calls that our enforcement officer goes on max? How can, can we tell something about complaints, which is why, which is why the part of the reason the enforcement officer's position was created in the first place. And then there really haven't been that many complaints. But then the response is, well, people don't like to complain. So you're, so you're left a little bit with like, okay, so how am I going to, how am I going to use that as a decision maker? I can't use the, completely the data point, but I also can't ignore the fact that very few people rise to the level of phoning a number, being able to be anonymous and letting people know there's a problem. People have a fundamental, and I get it, a fundamental reluctance to do that. So that's not, maybe not a matter of policy so much as just getting people more comfortable with letting the city know when there's problems so that something can be done, you know? And then the other things, one of the other things that occurs to me this morning or has been occurring to me is just, and the challenge with it is just the number of variables that we are not in control of and have to be aware of as it relates to this and creating good policy. And good policy is not, this will last a year and then we'll go check on it. That, that's not my idea of good policy, and I don't think it's the committee's idea either. I don't want to agree to something now and feel like, well, you know, it's just a year, we'll check in on it later. I mean, this should be something that maybe it won't last as long as that cap, which has served us incredibly well for decades now, but I don't want to be revisiting nor hand it off to the next group of counselors to revisit in two years. So we should be able to do something now that every counselor feels will somewhat stand the, the test of time. And the other thing I, I've got to get my head around better is the changes in housing coming up. And again, there's a lot of, this could change everything, you know, everything we're used to will be different, but the reality will be change will be slower and more incremental and, and we have to take a look at that. So yeah, it, it leaves me, it, 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 it leaves me more on the status quo than it does on making a change. And I know that's not going to be, isn't a popular position to be in right now. So I'm, I'm thinking that through because if I'm in a minority position on that, and as far as the council goes, that's definitely something for me to look at and, and consider because we've got people who've got a lot of commitment to this work, who've spent a lot of time preparing and have been watching this. I mean, some people here, when they, you know, first ran for office, ran on, on this, you know, this issue in the community of what's the right balance for us going forward with the, with the short-term rental public community.
Second, when you're talking about thinking about maintaining status quo, are you talking about the percentage or the current freeze?
Uh, sorry, good point. I'm thinking about the percentage. Now, I'm not wedded to that, to say I'm absolutely on the 17 and a half percent or nothing, but I'm not off of it either, the way that Jerry is. And that's part of the reason we're talking today is get a sense of, of where we are with things. So yeah, that's my, that the proximity question is interesting and I'm still working through that. I've talked with people one-on-one with the committee members over time, and we've talked about it in workshops. It's been presented or to me as kind of a proactive thing. It's not really an issue now, but it, it will help us going forward. I, I'm not sure in my own mind yet whether what it's really going to do. It, it, sometimes things look, and again, this may not be popular, but it's what's on my mind. You can look at things and say, that looks like a good way to kind of get us out of our current position or a good way to solve something. And, and maybe at first glance, it, it looks pretty good, but I am, I am literally wondering how that would play out in the next four, five, six, eight, however many years in terms of really making an impact on livability or people's feelings about livability. I'm just not sure, I'm not convinced that it's it would make a significant difference. It might look like it and we might look good for, I'm just being very candid now, we might look good for voting for that. But if I don't think it's really going to make a difference, I'm, I'm likely not going to be voting for it. So the jury's not out on that one? Yeah, I'm not done with my thinking on that, but I, I wish I was moving a little. Believe me, I wish I was moving a little further along, a little faster to come to a conclusion about these proposals that we've seen. So that, that's my, that's my thinking at the moment. And I'd welcome any other comments from council at this point or staff.
Got a few more comments as we continue discussing the proximity density and including the commercial district or not including, I think we all need to keep in mind this could have a significant impact to folks living right against the commercial zone. Jerry, in your questions about getting what our revenue looked like for the last few years, I think, Leila, you're probably best suited if you see any trends in there with explanation, either in your documentation or if we do a workshop on that topic to review that, to sort of point those things out. But I'm, I'm wondering if it's possible to take a swag as you're putting those numbers together, what what our expenses would look like considering we may have a 20% population growth? So I think we've got data today that says, here's our revenue coming in, here's what's in our budget, here's what our spending is. What would that look like if we added 20% more population here? If that's even possible, I don't think it's as easy as just adding 20% to the budget. But any, any swag or indication that you could give there, I think for me, that would also be helpful in our potential future discussions or decisions around raising TLT tax rates, that that may be something we have to look at as an alternate for revenue based on the assumption of that population growth. And I don't believe, based on your reaction, any of these is going to take some staff time and additional work to get in place or to maintain. But if you see anything that you feel like this is going to take a bit to get in place, but once it's, it's up and running, it's going to be fine versus if you went down this path, we're going to need to hire a full-time person. I think that might influence our decision-making as well. Last thing just to keep in mind is currently Last thing just to keep in mind is currently with no freeze. Um, I'm sorry, with no restrictions to those commercial districts. I think we need to be very conscious of how this is communicated in the timeline in which it's implemented. For example, if I've purchased a piece of property in the commercial district and am going down the road of developing it. As a rental, knowing there's no restrictions and I can get a permit. Halfway through my project, I'm not going to be done for another six months and this changes. I'd be pretty upset that all of a sudden I can't get a permit anymore for that type of investment. So we, we need to keep that in mind. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anything else? Okay. So I. It's a slow march up the field, but and I'm sure the committee feels that too. Uh, we've made some progress today. Uh, it's been good to. It's been good to get back into this. We've, there's been a lot, we've had a lot going on and some things, some projects hit that. We uh added, you know, our, our grant, it for all good things. Um. For our, our road improvement and pedestrian improvement and and improving the ability for the city to deliver water to the U G B. Um. That's, that's been time and a lot of it. So I think we've got a regroup on um. I think we need to, c- council needs to regroup with uh Leila and staff on. Uh, timing for next steps and specifically what the, the next. The next work session or or piece of work would be. So that's uh, I. I think Linda and I can work on that or take the point on that with Leila. I think for all of council, what would be useful is a follow-up from you all. Uh. Perhaps in addition to, maybe just to. Reinforce the comments that you made today. It would be a great help to get something in writing from each of you that that was clear about what. What else you've got on your mind as you're trying to or trying to get to a decision on this. And what other information or what specific discussion would be useful to you to help you. Move forward. And I think that could inform then another, I think as Jerry said earlier, another work session where we come to that is the next round. Talk about. Talk about revenue, which is clear, we need to and clear that's been on people's minds. And then also um. Also get clearer on the conversation council will have then, not so much with the committee, but among ourselves. Um, before we can get to the next step, which would be to propose something for um approval in council. I think we also need as a step in the work to decide if we're going to do anything different. Than a a single council meeting with public comment on this. So I'd like to get your thoughts on where, how the public would be engaged in these questions. And we know people don't come to workshops very often. As my family would say in the south, bless your heart for showing uh if you're here today as a member of the community, because that's wonderful. But we clearly need to have a broader. Discussion and input from community. And I see uh Terry has his hand up. So go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, Catherine, thank you. So um. I think your suggestion of uh counselors uh putting in writing uh. Some of their thoughts uh coming out of today and what we'd like to. Think about and are thinking about as we get into maybe a second work session. I think that's great. Um. But uh obviously there are limitations on our ability to exchange ideas like that. So uh please. Specific about how we should do that, because I think uh the 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 committee deserves to understand. Uh, that we're all taking this seriously and we all have individual concerns and perspectives and we are. Trying to work through them and the public needs to know that we're doing that as well. Uh, but we gotta do, do it in a way that stands up. So.
Excellent, uh excellent reminder. Yep. So what I would suggest is those go to Leila.
Yeah.
And then we will get into the next round of, you know, the it um. The next round of kind of, I won't say more normal, but more typical work of working with staff uh. To get a, to get a sense of consensus and to get something ready for council meeting and to see what other work needs to happen. So thank you for that reminder, Jerry. So do not send that to me, do not send that to the committee, uh send that to Leila. And then Linda and I will be on point for uh. Figuring out what we've got to work with and and where there may be gaps. And if there's additional work, we want to ask of the. Already hard-working committee or if there's more staff work to be done. Does that sound okay?
That sounds okay. And I would just, I agree with you that it'd be great to have more community input uh. Um, and maybe that's more likely to happen at a council meeting than a work session, but I think you. Well, made the point that uh, there's a good reason for the council to have another organized. And public conversation about this amongst ourselves. So.
Yeah.
Work session.
Okay. All right. Um, so I want to just remind folks, we're not here for public comment. I see another hand raised. So. If that was on purpose, I'm not doing that, because that's not our practice in here. So it's been the committee. Representatives and uh council and staff today. So. I want to thank, I I'm always thanking people, but there are always so many reasons to do that. So thank you, everybody. Thanks for the um work that the committee has done and continues to do. And I appreciate counselors. All the counselors thoughtful response today and. Clearly, we understand the importance of this and the, clearly, we understand the potential impact to our community in a number of ways. Um. And we're taking that seriously. So we're going to take some more time and not rush into this. So thank you very much. I'm gonna call this meeting to a close at three forty.
Yeah, before you do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I missed you. Didn't see your hand there.
Yeah, it was late. Um. So um, I understand that this isn't a time for public comment, but. Um, it would be important to remind people also that they can reach out to the counselors through the mailbox and. I really think it's important for us to be getting as much input from the community as we possibly can.
Yes, all I'm trying to do is be fair and consistent with the way we've run the session. So another good. Another good piece of help. Thank you, Tom. Okay. All right, great, everybody. Thanks so much. We will see you again.